There's Paul.
There's Paul.
Terrific.
Good morning, everyone.
Hey, Paul. Good morning. Thanks so much for joining today.
My pleasure.
I am thinking that we have four commissioners. We have a quorum meeting is called to order. This is a special meeting. Kind of off schedule, but the meeting last week ran a bit long. And we weren't able to get to every application. By calling a special meeting. What happens is, is everybody gets on track, basically on the same approval schedule. It's a two-step process. There's review, approval, and so on by the commission. And the second step is that the city attorney prepares a certificate of appropriateness. So for folks who did get bumped. I just want to reassure you, you're now on the same schedule as if your application had been reviewed and approved. In last meeting, we'll bring our notes to the city attorney, or Paul is here representing Victoria. And we'll have the C of A on the meeting next Friday. So you're back on track, which is great. I'm glad we were able to do that.
Thank you.
It's a short list, typical, not typical, some of our days. I don't know that I put it in any brilliant order, but, but on the agenda, anyway, I put first up is offense at 820 Warren Street. Who's here to speak for 820? Okay, we can go back around. Hey, John, good morning.
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 Let's go on then to 30 Union Street.
Yes.
Who's here to speak for 30 Union?
John Connor, the owner.
Hey, John, good morning.
Morning.
Thank you very much, and apologies for bumping you last time, but
No, thank you for making this special meeting. Thank you very much.
Terrific. So, John, if you could, you probably sat through three hours or more.
Yes.
If you give us a top line on what your presentation, what your project is about.
Right.
And then if you can, if you would share your screen and show us the elevations, drawings, photos, whatever you got.
Great. So this is, I've been here a few times. This is actually the last, hopefully, last meeting I have with you regarding the egress structure, which in layman's terms would be called a fire escape, but I don't think the building inspector likes that term any longer. So it's an egress structure. In fact, just replacing what was there. When I took over the property in late 18, when there was, we were removing appliances and doing demo and whatnot, the actual structure started pulling away from the building. So we took it down. And I simply now I'm asking to reconstruct what was there. In the application, you'll see there's a description with the risers being, you know, yeah, three, seven and three quarters high, 11 inches deep, the spindles, you know, one by one, spaced three and a half inches apart. The materials, instead of having a pressure-treated, we're going to use ACQ, which is a new type of pressure-treated wood, as opposed to the CCA, which was the toxic copper one that was used historically. There are pictures. Let me share what it looks like. Hold on a second, please. My first time sharing, so bear with me for a second.
Hey, John, I'm just going to interrupt you for one second. Are absolutely terrific and great preservation commission secretary is not here.
I know. That's why I'm trying to do this. Matt, can you give me a hand here? I had a tutorial earlier this morning, but I'm not successful in this.
We can see your screen, just so you know, you seem to show us. We can actually see what you're doing.
Okay.
So if you just show us what you need, you should be fine.
All right. Thank you.
I'm here.
Here is
That's you guys escaping. The, what I was going to say is, is if I could, sorry to do this, if I could ask somebody on the commission to take some notes on this, because Rebecca's not here, and I believe Rebecca may be, maybe moving on, so I'm sorry to hear that.
So can you see my, can you see the elevation, the back end of it? Great. Then I'm successful. Thank you. This is the picture from early 2019. And you'll see it's basically a means of egress from the top apartment and the central apartment down to the garden in the back. You'll see that there's the renovated building on the corner of First and Union across the way. So this actually, you do see the lower part here on First Street. And then if you're in the backyard, you see the structure from the barn that's presently there. Let me see if there's another photo. That's the first one. This is, second one shows a bit more detail of the construction, the lower half. But again, very standard. All the code, it's just a matter of replacing what was there.
John, when you, when you say that, you basically are using a newer model of lumber, but is this essentially what what we're looking at is what's going to go back?
Exactly. Yes. I don't think I'm going to paint it blue because the I just, I'm going to let it weather naturally. The house, you know, the siding is white, the windows are white. But if you request blue, blue it shall be.
No, we're not going to request blue. I just, I just want to want the commission to understand that this is different material, but essentially a like-for-like replacement.
It's a wood, it's a wood material. It's just treated differently than the old CCA.
And there are no other doors, windows, decorations, et cetera, that are impacted by this?
The windows, you approved at two meetings prior in the signing as well, and the renovations have been approved back, you know, in 19. So this is the last, the last element, because, yeah, this is the last element for your review.
Okay. So what we're looking at is what we're getting. It's just going to be a newer, better version.
That's correct. Stable version, quite honestly.
Terrific. Thank you very much for that, John.
Good.
Commissioners, any comments?
Looks good.
Looks fine.
Thank you.
If, excuse me, if we're relying on the like-for-like for evaluation of this, you know, we really rely upon Craig to implement that and to know what that is.
Yes. And I have, they're in the application, but I don't have it for this to share. There is, I had the architect draw the as-built back in 19. So there are, they're not architects' drawings, but they're elevations of the three sides. So there is something to review.
Chip, I know that Craig has been through this.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out to the commission that we are relying upon Craig to make that evaluation of like-for-like. I think it's fine in this application. That's, that's no problem. But I think that just as a procedural thing for the commission, I know we don't have a council here today, and we don't have
We do. We have a representative.
Oh, okay, good.
The applicant is not asserting like-for-like, or he wouldn't be here. I use that phrase, unfortunately.
Okay.
Craig deemed this a a bona fide application. Otherwise, he would have approved it.
Right.
And he did not. He sent it on to us.
So it's not like-for-like?
Not in technical terms, no.
Because in large part, because it is visible from, from First Street, quite noticeably. That's, I think that's
Okay, so then it needs to be fully documented so that Craig can implement.
He has those.
Okay.
Okay. May I have a motion then to find the application complete?
Motion. I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much, Paul. And a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None. Application is found complete. Make a motion to waive a public hearing and request city attorney to prepare a C of A to be available at our next meeting in a week.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. And a second, please.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None approved. Thank you, John.
Thank you. I'll see you next week then.
You will indeed.
Take care.
Phil, the applicant for 820 is in the room.
Oh, terrific. Sarah?
Hi, Phil.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about last week. I don't know if you heard my explanation. This is not going to slow you down at all. You will have your C of A basically on exactly the same timetable if we'd gotten you through the last meeting.
Okay, great.
Okay, and you, you, you shared some photos. Can you share those, or do you want someone else to share those?
I don't know how to share on here.
Okay.
Anyone else can do it. There's
Commissioners, I just pulled the photos out of Sarah's email and sent them to you as on a mail a minute ago. Terrific. So this is, this is an unusual situation because we have a live demo.
I, my dogs kept getting out into the street, so I put it up temporarily. If I need to change it, I can, but I just, that's what it is.
All right. So we're looking at a picket fence. A wood picket fence and
It's pressure-treated. With Gothic, it's called Gothic because of the top
Right.
Hill picket fence, right. Eight feet apart.
I understand. I know that Craig had a concern. You were, you were moving to kind of too quick for us. I'm assuming you guys are sorted out?
Yeah, yeah, he's fine now.
Okay. Cool.
Sarah, you don't by chance have a view of the neighbor's house to the right, do you? I just wanted to demonstrate that it's, it would be a picket fence sort of that continues with the fence next door.
Yeah. The the, I sent two pictures on the original application that was last time, last Friday. And in there, the neighbor's house, which has a white picket fence like this, is right next to it. Can you see that in that original application?
Would it, would it work so smoothly? We'd have to go back into mail and, and open it up, but
Well, yeah, it's the same kind of picket fence. It's just painted white.
I understand.
And
I'm literally across the street right now on your neighbor, and I can, I wish I could like hold my camera up and just
Oh, hi.
It's, it's very similar. I can attest to that. I'm literally looking at it right now.
Yeah, looks good.
Okay.
Looks good.
I agree with that.
Okay, Sarah, I think, I think we're back on track. Make a motion to find the application complete.
I mean, shouldn't.
Do that again. Hugh and Paul, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to waive a public hearing and request city attorney to prepare a C of A.
I'll make that motion, Jeremy.
Thank you very much, Jeremy and Hugh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Application's approved.
Okay, thank you. So I just come back next week, or how?
You do, you do not have to come back next week. Applicant doesn't have to be present at, at the, at the second meeting. We will vote on the C of A next week. That C of A gets stamped and signed by Phil. It goes directly to Craig. You can contact him then.
Okay.
Either, either end of day Friday or first thing on Monday. And get whatever permits you need.
Okay, thank you. Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Bye.
513 Warren.
Hi, this is Kylie from Taconic.
Where, I'm looking for you on the screen. You're there.
Hello.
Hi.
Chad Lindberg with Taconic and Kylie from our office.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kylie, can you put up our images from the alley? The back portion of 513, as you can see in the photo, on the upper left and right there, is, has encountered a structural failure with the foundation, which has allowed that whole building to kind of shift to the left a little. And, yeah, and drop down. So what we're proposing is that we're going to shore the east wall, which is the wall on the right. And actually, leave the photos, Kylie. I think that's a better spot for us, right? So we're going to shore the east wall and remove the back wall. Okay. And we'd like to then reconstruct the foundation and rebuild the rear wall that we're looking at there with wood framing. So now we can go to the images, Kylie, showing the so the image on the right shows the, the wood reconstruction of that rear wall.
Hey, so real quick.
Our intention is to replace the windows and doors. Matching the existing. And use a clavert siding.
And you're using the same, same window openings, whatever these are.
Yes.
Six or six.
Same.
Are you proposing that the side walls remain brick?
The sidewall to the east, which is the right side chip, would would remain brick. Yes.
That's the party essentially on the property line wall?
That's correct.
And the wall that is parallel to that, then, as we're looking at your drawing on the left-hand side, the left-hand wall of that perpendicular to the rear wall would then also be wood siding? Or, I'm sorry, wood frame?
In that wall is currently wood frame. That had been changed at some point over time as those buildings expanded and combined and moved together, right?
Do we have a photograph of that?
I do. Do you have that available, Kylie? That looks up into that second, you know, from the roof deck, looking back over. I think that's where Chip's looking.
Yeah, just give me one second.
Sure.
Chad, has the, has the east wall, that, that party wall, has that, that is tipped in, I presume?
Very slightly, you know, it's, it's not as bad as the, because, because that rear wall has buckled as, as that foundation. Yes, exactly. So the east wall is actually pretty straight.
Yeah.
And our intent
You're going to salvage that and leave that?
Yes.
And are you then going to put wood framing on the inside of that to insulate it or to allow for mechanical, electrical, et cetera?
That's the way it's currently constructed, and obviously, a lot of that will be removed and reconstructed for that, for the interior finish, as we're going to need to brace that east brick wall during this process, right?
And that, that east wall is also supporting the second floor?
It is. And we're, we're going to use, we're going to have a reconnection of that second-floor diaphragm and use that to brace that east wall as well in the final construction.
Understood. So in this photograph, what we're looking at with those three windows and the wood siding that's to the left of that.
Yeah.
That, that you think was formerly a brick wall that then was replaced at some point with frame?
I think so. Yeah, yeah. And I think that happened as this little wood frame addition to the west of it was, was put in there. I think they just took that brick wall out, tied the two together and brought this little almost clear story area up above.
Right. So that clear story area that we're looking at is, is those three windows are windows that are into that rear second-floor room.
Yep.
And, and then the, that section with the deck and the roof that is below the three windows, is that part of this existing house? It's not a neighbor's house.
No, this is our property. Yeah, this is part of our property. Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
You can see the warp in the roof.
Is that corner buckled and dropped, right?
Right rear corner has, and you can even see it running across the gutter, across the top of the roof, that that
Yeah.
whole corner has fallen down.
Absolutely. It's dropped substantially. And, you know, the, it's time to stabilize this system and for a number of reasons, this was a preferred construction method.
So you're provide, you're, you're proposing to remove the brick wall completely and its foundation and replace a new foundation in the location of the existing foundation on that rear?
Yeah.
And then that's the connection that you're proposing between that? Would it be possible, just as you're not showing the wood frame in this detail, which is a good detail to look at for a second, you're not showing the interior wood frame of this?
This is more a structural piece. Yeah, exactly, Chip. But there, there, there would be that insulated, you know, wood frame section right along the inside of the bricks.
Right. And is that, and so then would it be possible for you to do a brick veneer on the rear addition in lieu of a wood frame?
Finish.
Yeah, as a finish, still doing a wood structure, but just returning the brick. I mean, those brick arches are quite nice and, you know, it's it was a brick building.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of hate for the commission to approve the loss of a brick building of fabric with wood frame.
Understood. That's, that's why really why we're here. And I, I fully appreciate that. This, this is the, this was their preference. If possible, but would you be, would you be opposed to a thin veneer, or would you look for a full four-inch veneer system?
Well, I mean, you've got the, you've got the brick there.
We do.
You've got the, you've got the four-inch brick on site.
Yeah.
You've got the arches. You've got the material that's there. I guess those those sills for the window and the sill for the door, is that sill for the door stone, or is it?
I believe, I believe it was cast, like a cast piece that was poured in there.
Uh huh.
But, but I could verify that.
So not necessarily original to that?
Yeah.
But
The window sills are wood.
The window sills are wood.
Yep, but you're right, the door, the sill for the door is like a cast concrete or something similar.
I, I would encourage the applicant to consider a brick, you know, four-inch brick veneer and actually reuse the brick that's there.
I agree.
Very good. We will take that back and get some feedback and be back for the next meeting.
One of the things that I would like to look at in that detailed photograph of the, of the door that you have with the door with the window. I, I'm not completely familiar with all the construction techniques in in, in different time periods in Hudson, but it's not uncommon to have a structural wood frame that is inside of the masonry that acts as a kind of frame post and lintel. It looks like that's the type of construction that's here. Sometimes in the window, we're looking at this window that the window frame was actually used as a structural member before the brick, it went, it went in as the brick was laid up around it. So act like a kind of a formwork that allowed the lintel to be laid up and the brick, the brick to be laid up and the lintel to be laid up. It's an interesting structural detail that you might want to consider in this, in the way that you detail the window and the door openings of, for this building, because it's actually an early construction technique. Is that, is the glass in the window that we're looking at here now, clearly, the door is a, is a much later replacement. But do we believe that the window sash and the glazing of the window sash might be original to this construction or very early?
I believe, I believe it is. I believe it's either original or very early, but I, I agree with your assessment, Chip, that this component would have been installed as a unit as the brick came up around it. Otherwise, we'd see a much different lintel system above, right?
That lintel is not really kind of structural. It's almost cosmetic.
It's, 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 it's a shared load path between the top of the door slash window and the lintel, right?
What is the second, do you have a, can you zoom in on a detail of the second-floor window?
Same construction.
Yeah, it shows very similar construction. I mean, I think that this could be, you know, this could be a very early, you know, this could be a very early fabric. You see the to the right of the window, I want the commission members to look at the brickwork to the, as we're looking at this window, to the right of the window. At the very top of the window going to the right, we have an all header bond.
Yes.
And that all header bond is one row of brick that's going back in that locks in this brick that locks in this brick wall. And then as it comes to the window opening itself, where that little cursor is right now, there's a sliced brick that is thinner. And that's called a queen closer. A queen closer is smaller than the header itself. You see a full header to the left where the cursor is. If you could put your cursor on that, that is a full header, but to the right of that is a member that's cut down in order to course out these bricks. And you see the different size of, sizes of the queen closers. If you go down, skip every other course and point out these queen closes. Look at how little that one is directly above the all header bond that's right there. This indicates some very, very old construction of old brick that was highly irregular in its size, could be handmade, could just be rather poorly made brick, if you will. But this kind of random pattern, not mechanical, not precise, where every brick is exactly the same, really communicates that this is a handmade object. And it's, it's a, it's a very important part of the texture, the feel, and and the handmade quality of, of this, of this building. If, if we were to take a really precise preservation, restoration model here, every brick would be numbered before it's assembled and returned back in its exact placement. That may be a little excessive here, maybe beyond what is within reach of the applicant, but just as a, as an observation for precise restoration, it's a, it's a, it's a handsome wall. To use a term, you know. Chip, could this structure possibly have preceded the structure on Warren Street? Could this have some sort of a standalone or? It, it's possible that it was, that the front structure was removed and replaced or heavily modified. You know, updated at some point on the street, and that what is behind the street facade is an older portion that remained. Yes. So it is possible that this structure, what we're looking at, this fabric predates the fabric that we see on the street. I hate to say that it's a thing of beauty, but it really is.
No, I, I couldn't agree more with the parts and pieces of the construction. And And um I think um that would definitely be the preferred reconstruction would be to be able to develop that veneer. So let me take all that back to the applicant and have that conversation and we'll go from there.
It's terrific. Thank you very much, Chad and Kylie. We will see you then. Well, you you'll let me know and let Craig know. Uh but basically, I'm gonna put you on the agenda for a week from today.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Phil. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great weekend.
Bye bye. Uh we've got uh two oh five dash two oh seven Warren Street. Or I think we do. Is that Sokol? Yes.
Hello.
Hey Sokol, good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Very well, thanks.
I also have uh Matt to hear with me who's gonna help me uh with the presentation.
Terrific. Take your time. We're 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 good. We moving along nicely. So take your time and present what you got.
Yeah, thank you so much uh for setting up this meeting. Really appreciate it.
So without further ado, folks, I'm going to um give us the initial presentation and then Sokol and I can uh answer any questions that come down. At this time, I'm gonna share my screen. Hang on one second. Okay. All right, um so what we're proposing to to uh to do uh with this uh with this project, two oh five, two oh seven Warren Street is um we uh we we are attempting to um create a new storefront um as assembly on the ground floor. The current condition of the building uh has these punched windows, double hung windows, and then the residential entry or the entry to the main building um off center. And um when we were working with this project, we decided that uh it would make more sense to uh engage the ground floor with commercial space and to actually have an appropriate um commercial space window that um does more engaging and then allows people to um to 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 invite themselves into the commercial spaces proper as opposed to a a shared um uh front door. We did some historical research and we came up with a with with this image of the um of the of the building with uh two storefronts on it. Um the first storefront being this ice cream bar and then next to it uh next to the the residential entry is the is the uh other storefront. So our um our intention is to mimic uh this image and to fall back to this historic period where uh the commercial space uh had their two separate entries and they had two separate commercial uh storefront uh assemblies. Um I'm gonna zoom in so we can take a look at what what our um design is. Clear storefront glazing with a with a with a glass door. We are we are trying to uh accommodate this uh historical detail here with with these uh uh tiles uh that are uh installed on the bottom of the um of the bay window. And uh we're we're we are uh coming back with that. We will we're hoping to use um an exterior uh heavier grade uh tile, preferably a a glazed terracotta tile um that'll that'll work with the same um uh dimension that we see in the historic photograph. The um next uh storefront would be uh a a a a wooden um uh base to it with the the full glazing. Uh we are trying to draw inspiration again from this photograph um uh and and picking up the 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 header uh condition at this storefront to see it's a little bit different than this one. This one's more of a flat band. Whereas this one um has uh more of a um of a of a plinth um uh the design to it. Uh and 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 that's really what we're looking to do. Uh on our previous um presentation uh prior to this the change where we had the punched openings, um we uh proposed a uh a color palette of um of a of a blue and a gray uh to to fill out the windows and the trim. Our storefront uh configuration will be the same in terms of color palette. Uh our storefronts would be white. Um the 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 tile below would be a white glazed terracotta tile. And um and that would match the trim that uh is going to remain on the upper floor.
Sokol, are you addressing any other elements uh but are just what we're looking at right now?
Just what we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
Everything else is staying the same.
Thank you.
Would you? Historic photograph? I'm sorry, did I interrupt somebody?
No, I was just saying, I think it looks I I think it looks very nice. I like the fact that they're referring to the old photo.
Yeah.
We we also did, we're we're working in collaboration with the State Historic Preservation Office on this project as well. And we had submitted this um for their review and um they they are in um in agreement with it.
Um one of the things that you you well, first of all, generally, I think this is a great concept and I think it's really good for the building and really good for the street. And um what what I'm going to suggest are just really uh details to kind of uh to consider uh for uh uh a a next level of detail of improvement. It it it's interesting in this uh historic photograph of the of the awning compared to the drawing that you have on the left, you made a note of the different heights of the of the um headers above the of the trim above the glass. And I wonder if as we're looking at this photograph, that the shaded area under the um canopy apron, if you could zoom in on that. I I wonder if that that uh awning uh in the story photograph, I wonder if that couldn't be obscuring some thickened uh beam, if you will. It looks like the in the drawing that the that the narrow roof that you're showing here um uh i- is being shown here, that there may be structure below that. Not that it needs to be identical to the other uh storefront, because I don't think it necessarily should be identical to the storefront uh that or that the two storefronts need to be identical. Because clearly, they they were it looks like they were built at different times. And the storefront that's on the right appears to be flush with the uh building a wall, whereas this storefront has some projection um in the uh the storefront on the left hand side. So if there are additional historic photographs that you may find that might provide us with a little bit different um or more information about that the the top of that glass, uh it it certainly would be helpful to 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 help you in working out the detail. The other thing that I would propose in this photograph that you look at is that the actual roof of this storefront on the left hand side as it projects over the side window return, that area, thank you for pointing that out, that area. It 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 looks rather awkward in terms of the overall design in the same way that it looks awkward in the way that it intersects the little pent roof over the door uh to the apartments uh the um. That looks like a rather awkward installation. And I think that from an historic preservation point of view, we don't need to replicate an awkward design. Uh we can improve the design and make it a little cleaner and maybe with a little bit better. Um you know, clearly, we build them with better technology. We can also, we don't need to be um absolutely following a photograph of a of of a previous design in order to make it appropriate and legitimate. So I would offer that to you as you begin to study the more detailing of how that roof projection uh over this storefront um uh looks um and is actually detailed. Because the pent roof over the door might is likely going to predate the um you know, be at a different building period than the than the storefront. And so I think it's fair to architecturally separate them. Do you think that that pent roof that's there is representative of the historic photograph?
We think it's close. Um I you know, there was a lot of original material that was removed off, but I think the volume and the form is correct. And um and 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 this little uh projection here is the projection that you we do get from the bay window. So it does make sense for us to to tie the 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 cap of the of the storefront to it. I I agree. I you know, I think um you know, a a solution of how this ties in uh can be explored a little bit more. Um you know, currently in that photograph, you see it just kind of crashes into it. And um and and you know, we can certainly come up with a with a better solution. But if you do see here, see this form is very, very similar to what we
Yes.
what we see here, which is which is very helpful. Unfortunately, when we when we ripped apart the um the say the the vinyl siding, I can't seem to get this to work. Uh when we when we ripped down the uh the vinyl siding, there was no there was no historical uh material left of of the of the opening of of the of the storefronts. But uh but I think, you know, a a clean cricket, I I liked the idea that, you know, Sokol was exploring, which was taking um the the depth of this um uh of this projection here and carrying that through as as a straight line and leaving it with a with a flat top to it. I I liked that idea because it seemed to be very clean and it wasn't trying to push something that um that we just didn't have evidence of.
Basically, I I I just want to reinforce that you I feel that you have latitude as a modern designer to execute this in a way that isn't necessarily slavish to the photograph. One other thing I wonder about is um this is this building is originally a wood framed building. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So is there any evidence of of a interior uh uh steel beam or timber beam that uh was installed in that frame uh when the storefront was built?
Uh in the wall itself, we did not see any evidence of a of a steel spandrel. However, the commercial spaces, once we demolished them, we did find um elements of steel girders that did open up the spans uh which I believe was to create larger commercial spaces.
Sure. Yeah, I just wonder what the you will need some interior structure at the wall uh that is not evidenced here in the um in this photograph, although it may be an integral part of the doorway, the recessed doorway, which presumably is more or less in the plane of the second floor wall above.
That's correct, yes. Uh we uh we do have some experience with these types of storefronts in in the past and um you know, what we have discovered on other buildings and in other towns uh is that these little um bay windows are actually kind of built like cages, like little bird cages that kind of sit on top of the uh of the structure itself. And all the heavy lifting is happening back here.
Of course.
And then you see some larger posts that are that are set here. And and that would be our um our solution in in terms of of structure and 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 maintaining the uh the structural integrity of the building and the openness, yeah.
Yeah, nice. I it's it's a great, it's a great thing and and terrific and and um you know, I know we don't really opine on color, but this photograph suggests that that tiles and that the storefront is probably a nineteen thirties or nineteen, maybe a nineteen forties, maybe a nineteen twenties design. I love the idea of doing a glazed terracotta tile to restore that vintage. I think that's really appropriate, particularly with the very thin uh molins and large plate glass uh storefront windows that are in this design. I don't, I I mean, I think it's, I I think it's a great, it's a great idea and and thank you very much for that your attention to the historic photograph. It'd be nice to know what the color of the tile is, but um uh my my uh my inclination would be go to the dark, but you know, um your judgment.
Um Chad, can I ask you a question? This storefront, is it going to be flush with the facade? This one appears as if it like projected out.
It does project out. It projects out to um the 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 uh the canopy above and and to the property the property line of of the actual structure. So it's not, it's not extending onto the sidewalk.
Right.
But it does sit uh in front of the uh the the plane of the elevation proper.
Okay, thank you.
And and you can see the extent of that projection in this photograph by simply looking at the flared wall that is uh going back to the door, entering into the, you know, the enters into the building. That flared tile wall uh going back to the store door, that flare wall, yes, thank you, that flare wall, you see that length there is I presume that the door is more or less on the plane of the second floor, because that's where the structure would be. So there's a substantial projection of that uh storefront. It could be, you know, it could be thirty inches or, I mean, you know, could be substantial.
Yeah, and it's been our experience that in in these types of uh applications, sometimes the door is even set back even farther in from the uh from the uh the the upper story.
Yeah.
And they have done, they did that. This was kind of an early form of accessibility that was done in the nineteen uh usually nineteen forties, you see it. But it was an idea, it was a way of ramping up, because you can see here, you've got two significant steps to get into that house. So um you know, what what was done, you see this a lot in New Haven, Connecticut, actually, where the uh the storefronts were changed in the nineteen forties and they really projected deep in because of the high stoops that were in New Haven at the time.
Uh huh. Great. So it's possible that the door, what you're suggesting is that the storefront door might not align with the second floor uh for exactly that uh exactly that reason. I think that's that's a great observation. Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
So uh uh what what do you all, well, first of all, I'm so happy to see that the, I I think what you're doing is great. I'm uh ecstatic to see the particle board going away. Uh and uh I'm I'm just asking uh an earnest question. Did uh I you you've seemed uh pretty comfortable with with uh with Chips with the commission suggestions. What makes most sense going forward? You want to come back uh Friday and 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 give it a think?
I would like to um develop the uh the canopy detail um a little bit more and come back on Friday and just show you what we think the profiles are going to be.
I I thank you for that and 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 thank you very much for being uh responsive uh as you have been to the the stuff that uh that uh Chip suggested. I think that's fantastic. And and of course, you you will be on the agenda for Friday and and have an opportunity to to mess around with some of these ideas.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I I don't want to overdo the um or or get into the zoning about signage, but look at the amount of signage that's in this historic photograph. I mean, it's killer. It's got a, you know, it's got a projecting sign, it's got a banner, big banner sign, it's got lettering on the awnings and plaster all over the windows and I love the uh the um the telephone uh belt, the bell telephone logo. And I love the, the, the telephone belt, the belt telephone logos that are on the, on the ceramic tile. It's, it's really screaming out, we want, we want your business.
I think Robin Ventura would have been very proud of this.
So that's, that's, that's all we got, was, well, you, you guys are great, this is going to be so nice to see built. And we'll see you on Friday unless there are other, other, other comments from the commission. There are none. So folks, it, it, it's Good Friday, it's Passover, it's all kinds of stuff. I, I thank you all so much for coming in this morning. And for folks coming back, we'll, we'll see in a week, but appreciate everybody making a push to keep us preserving stuff, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you.
You too.
Bye bye.